All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Action Meeting. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay. This evening, we have a presentation from the Iron Knights Triathlon. So I'm not sure who's making the presentation.
Mr. Theodore.
Mr. Theodore, welcome.
Hello, members of the North Penn School Board, and thank you for having us today. This is quite an honor to have us recognized here in front of the school board and the school district for a program that we instituted back in 2012 as basically an idea to try and get our kids more physical activity and learn about goal-setting and to learn about their own physical fitness and health. And since 2012, our Iron Knights Triathlon has grown tremendously. Every year that we've done this program, it has grown to the point of this year being our highest year yet at 1,840 kids throughout the North Penn School District in grades, kindergarten through sixth grade, have participated in our event. So that's roughly around 20%, 25% of all the elementary kids in our district that took part in this event. And, you know, we want to thank the school district for taking a chance on us 11 years ago and saying, hey, let's do this idea. This is really an honor to be standing here. And since this program has been instituted here in North Penn, other school districts are now trying to catch on with us. In fact, Central Buck School District just ran their first elementary triathlon this year. I've received emails and correspondence from Council Rock School District. They would like to run one next year. So this is something that started right here in North Penn, and we're very proud of our program and very proud to continue it. Today, we have four students from our triathlon that would like to talk about their experiences doing our event and how it means for them. So I'm going to let them come up and introduce themselves, and they have something written for you.
Hi. My name is Finley Berg. I'm going into third grade, and I go to school at Gwinor. The Iron Knights Triathlon has positively impacted my life by increasing my confidence. I'm really proud of myself because I was faster this year compared to last year. The training helped me feel more confident in my swimming, which is important because now I can swim on my own in my grandparents' lake house in Maryland. I also improved my position in the swimming lanes. For example, last year, I was in lane one, and this year, I was in lane 10. Lane one is the most shallow, and lane 10 is the deepest. The training on my bike gave me time to spend with my mom and my sister. Next year, I look forward to being able to train with my sister because she will be in kindergarten at Gwinor. Lastly, the triathlon is something that I get to do with my best friend. She and I competed last year, and she got second place, and I got first place. I can't wait to do the triathlon again next year.
Thank you, Finley.
Hi. My name is Casey Isner. I'm in third grade at Vital Path Elementary School. This is my second Iron Knights Triathlon. The Iron Knights Triathlon has positively impacted my life in many ways. One way is that I joined the Fun with Fitness program at my school to help me get ready for the triathlon. Each week at Fun with Fitness, we worked on getting stronger and also having fun with friends. On the day of the Iron Knights Triathlon, I felt nervous but excited. I felt nervous because being in third grade meant that I have to swim farther, bike farther, and run farther than I did in second grade. I felt excited because I had been training, and being in the Iron Knights Triathlon is a big accomplishment to me. I started with swimming. I swam the first lap, which wasn't that hard. The second lap got a bit harder because I got tired from the first lap. The third lap, I swam slower than any of the other laps, but I kept going. My arms and legs were aching as I ran into the parking lot. My transition color was pink, and my number was 1340. So I ran to my spot, dried off as quick as I could, put my shirt and shorts on over my bathing suit, put on my shoes, and slipped my helmet on my head. I hopped on my bike. When I got to the cones, I took off. As I was riding my bike there, volunteers pointed me in the right direction before I knew I had finished my first bike lap. I kept pedaling as quickly as I could. I went around until my parents cheering me on. I finished my last lap, walking my bike back to the trenches near me and started to run. Even though my whole body was aching, I kept going because I knew I was so close. I ran up the hill and back down, and I could see my family cheering me on. I ran to the track. I was super tired, but I kept going. Volunteers kept saying, you're so close, and keep going. As I crossed the finish line, I felt so proud of myself. My family and friends cheered and were so proud of me. I was even more proud of myself for completing the big accomplishment. I can't wait to compete in the Iron Knights Triathlon again next year.
Thank you, Casey.
Hi. My name is Tasmin, and I am in fifth grade at North Wales Elementary. During the triathlon, I went to many things to get ready, which had a positive impact on my life. I trained, prepared myself, and was able to become a better person through this process and this wonderful event. I believe that in any athletic competition, it is important that anyone participating train. During my training, some things I did well were that I ate healthily, slept well, and practiced a lot of running and swimming. However, some things I could have done better were practicing biking, preparing my items beforehand, and not dwelling on one thing at a time. For example, even though I had spent a lot of time training for the swimming and biking event, I barely spent any little to none of my time on biking. I did running on Tuesdays and Thursdays and swimming any other day I could go to the YMCA. However, I did not place any importance on training for biking. I disregarded it, thinking I was good enough to quickly finish the biking part. I feel that if I had practiced even a little bit more, I would have been able to finish the triathlon in a much shorter amount of time. Finally, I feel that in my training, there was things I now practice consistently in my everyday life. One example of this is how I learned to manage my time better. I also began exercising more and am now better at remembering things. I managed my time better by balancing swimming and running with my studies. Finally, I was able to remember to remind my parents to take me to the YMCA to swim. As mentioned before, one positive thing that impacted my life was having to prepare myself in many ways. Before the triathlon, I ensured that I had everything I needed to enter the event. For swimming, I made sure I had everything I needed, for example, swimsuit, goggles, and swim cap and a towel. For biking, I checked my bike chain to see if it was properly oiled and made sure my helmet was okay. I also kept thinking positive thoughts throughout training and the triathlon. That is how the triathlon impacted me by prepping myself. Finally, after participating in the triathlon, I believe that I was able to become a better person. For instance, before I started training in the triathlon, I did not regularly exercise. However, nowadays, I try to exercise whenever I can. Also, before this event, I was also bad at managing my time. Now, I am capable of splitting my time efficiently, power everything I need to, and am now able to go on to the next thing on my to-do list without wasting time. For example, if I had many things to do as soon as possible, before, I would not have been able to do all of them in one day and would have had to do them another time. Now, I can work smarter, so I wouldn't have to do them another day. In conclusion, the 2023 North Penn Triathlon has positively impacted my life. Had I not entered, I would have missed out on a great opportunity to better myself.
Thank you, Tasmin.
Hello. My name is Sydney, and I'm going to seventh grade at Penfield Middle School. Competing in a triathlon can have a profound impact on your everyday life. It's an incredibly rewarding experience that can change what you think about yourself and your abilities. Things such as building confidence, resilience, and a sense of community can be a benefit of doing a triathlon. First, participating in a triathlon can help build confidence. Competing in a triathlon requires a surprisingly amount of physical and mental strength, even as much as training for this exciting day can be a challenge. Crossing the finish line makes you feel a sense of pride and accomplishment that can and will help you build confidence in more areas of your life. You will sense that you are capable of setting a goal that you can achieve, and it will be extremely empowering. Next, having resilience can have a big impact on any physical activity. The importance of being determined is what it's all about. In the 2022 triathlon, I was in the middle of biking my first couple laps, and my bike chain popped off. With a bitter look on my face, I walked over to see a man ready to help me fix my bike so I could get back to the race. As he was putting pieces from my bike back together, all I could think about is that I was going to be the last person to make it across the finish line or that I was a failure just because I got stuck in a dilemma. As he gave me back my bike, I still didn't feel confident, but as I biked past many family members, it gave me hope. I will never forget this, because even though things didn't always work out the way you want them to, you should still keep moving forward and never give up. Lastly, a sense of community is significant in reaching goals. It's amazing to know that other people are supporting you. I felt a sense of pride being a part of something so special. Getting to have the opportunity that districts don't have gives you confidence for personal growth and builds a sense of purpose. All in all, a triathlon is a challenging and rewarding experience that requires a significant amount of training and dedication. The combination of swimming, cycling, and running makes for a very unique and exciting experience that is not found anywhere in a triathlon. The sense of accomplishment that comes from competing in the race is unmatched. If you're ever looking for a new challenge to face, consider signing up for the triathlon.
Thank you, Sydney. So thank you, Mr. Theodore, for arranging this whole Ironman triathlon. It was very impressive. I think several of us went up to see it. And just the logistics alone, looking at all those bikes, I'm like, how are these kids ever going to find their bike again? It was really incredible. And it was so nice to see all the volunteers there helping the kids too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that finally, that this doesn't happen just by one person. My department is just fantastic in working together to put this. I'm going to thank Jen Johnson for coming tonight. But the rest of my department, Becky McHenry, who was in charge of our parent organization, also helps tremendously with gathering the volunteers and raising money to support the kids, to just make it special for them. So it is truly a team effort, and I'm very, very grateful and thankful to work with all the people that I have in our department. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out tonight. And I just want to say thank you again to Finley, Casey, Tasmin, and Sydney for speaking tonight and letting us know how about their experience.
I will have you know that Mrs. Stoll reached out, I think, to me and said, could we have the Iron Knights come and do proclamations? And typically, with proclamations, it's we bring in the state champions, the district champions. It's all about accolades. So we said to Mr. Theodore, how about you bring all the winners? And he said, that's not what the triathlon is about. It's about kids learning lessons and perseverance and setting goals, and so I'm going to find students who represent all those things. So really appreciate the students you brought with you this evening, and to the entire department, thank you for all that you do. It's one of the best events that North Penn hosts. So thank you.
I also want to point out that many of us who have children in the district have also where now we now consider ourselves to be Iron Knights alum. And there should be a parent alum group. I'm just going to point that out. But anyway, I just want to say that for the students, everything that you said, I could reflect on, and those were the same things that the lessons that you learned were the same conversations that I had with my children. And I had a daughter who graduated this year, and the story of her situation on a bike, very much like yours, is still something that we use to talk about and model persistence, right? That you pick yourself up and you keep going. And so I just want to, as a parent, I want to thank you for this opportunity, not just for what you give the students, but what you also give parents. You've given me a lifetime of lessons to be able to talk and memories to talk with my kids through. But I will never forget one year when it was kind of a weird rain, so the weather was bad. I had two kids in two different time slots, and we had to do the Girls on the Run 5K the next day. So when you talk about the confidence that it builds for children, the confidence for me to be a parent came, I found my confidence that weekend. If I could get two kids to a triathlon, set up, transport their bikes on and off the car, anyway, it was an amazing weekend for me and one that I often reflect on. I can get through anything because I got through that weekend and loved it, right? And had a great time. So thank you all so much for what you do. This is really a gift to our community.
And please don't feel obligated to stay. You're dismissed. Thank you all so much for coming.
Although, you're very welcome to stay if you would like. We'll just give everybody a minute to walk out. Mr. Patchell, you look anxious. You look anxious.
Yes, Audience and Citizens next, but I have to read the statement first. I'm sorry, I'm 76. Sometimes my hearing is a little compromised. So I may ask you to speak again, but please do start the clock when I am ready, not when I walk up to the microphone. Thank you.
I have to read the statement first, though, Mr. Patchell.
Yes, you can read the statement, and I'll sign in. You take care of what you have to do. I'll do what I do.
Thank you. All right. "This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the Audience and Citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which are or may come before the board. It does not design for debate or discussion with the board. When appropriate, individual school board directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the Audience and Citizens period has concluded or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting." And this is in reference to Board Policy 903. So with that, Mr. Altieri actually signed up, so he should actually go first, but Mr. Altieri, if you're okay, Mr. Patchell goes first, that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Patchell.
All right. You can start the clock. I am ready. Number one, I'm going to say this real slow so you guys can savor what I'm saying. The property tax deemed by the state government does not conform to PA constitutional legality. So you want to make a plan for about a billion dollars with the unknown outcome of how this is going to work out? I'm sorry, that may mess up your program. My name is William Patchell. I live in Montgomery Township, probably the finest township probably in the state or maybe the country. I think Zillow's got us at 58 or 54. We got everything anybody needs. And actually, I don't think Montgomery Township needs North Penn School District, but that's for a later date. The JROTC, I have to say, Dr. Bowers told me that when they were here, they got up early, and they're running at like 5:00 in the morning. And Major Palmier is doing a fantastic job without the help of Sullivan, and they have found another major who is a Marine. And with a lot of training and these triathletes, they may be able to get into the Citadel and finish four years at a senior military college. So that is not a paid advertisement, but I found great success with what they do. Okay? The ninth grade, the cost, the time to complete, the ultimate finance cost over 30 years. My next speaker will tell you about the final cost. Okay? What is it? Nobody knows. Firstly, a vote on the plans. Stop bringing me a plan and saying, this is what we decided, now I want you to vote on it. No, we need to vote on a plan that's sensible. You said, oh, let's get the students involved. Oh, yeah. Okay? I doubt 100% climate-friendly. That seems to be in a global conversation. Using tech-building materials? Yes, no concrete. It's a high CO2 producer. Are you ready to use climate-friendly aluminum? Costs a little bit more. Are you reusing building materials? No concrete, no production of CO2, no emissions? The current plan has none of these. That worthless guy, and I won't say worthless, that people you hire, they are rooted in the past, 50 years ago. You know what they're like? They're like those five people going down to look at the Titanic to see how to build a new boat. It's ridiculous, the price, what costs, what we pay over three years. If you can guess the labor cost, the number of students that will be in the ninth grade in 208, I heard the birth rate of the United States is going down. Because you know why? Nobody's got any confidence. No confidence, right? They're not having any kids. And I'll tell you what, I get a right to know. For these kindergarten class, last year was 900. I'm hitting 700 now, and I'll be sure to ask that every single week. You better come up with 900, or you're going to have to have a reduction in place. The number of students that will be...
Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Thank you. You needed Jack Bachmann. He was the class president. He's the only one that really knew what was going on. He did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Mr. Altieri, do you want to...
Vince Altieri, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. Couple of comments from the last meeting. The timing of the billion-dollar high school referendum project...
Mr. Altieri, can you hold one second? Can we get the clock?
...disguised as a less than $100 million referendum is just another example of DC-style politics. The fact of the matter is, you're not going to put the billion-dollar referendum on the November election because it might break up this political monopoly that exists in North Penn School District Board of Directors. And now the taxpayer needs to pay for a special election. That's unfair. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. When candidly, what's the difference? What's the difference if you're not going to tell the truth, if you have an election on January 9th? Julember? Doesn't matter. November? If you don't tell the truth, it doesn't matter when you're going to have the election. Next point. I heard, I know you heard the senior, that senior citizen that spoke at last week's meeting, but I really hope you listened. And I talked about making this election about the entire community. That senior citizen had some wisdom. And candidly, I was taken back when I heard what that senior citizen heard from a board director, and that is, you got to raise. I'll tell you right now, if I get on this board of directors and I say something that irresponsible, I will jump up out of my seat and resign in embarrassment. That should never happen to anyone, any taxpayer in this community, let alone a senior citizen. Last point, and this directly relates to the importance of getting the entire community involved in November's election. We've all heard Mr. Caser, or I like to say, many of us heard Mr. Caser, speak about the high school field being for the entire community. And I agree 100%. Well, I have a direct question for you, Madam Presidente. How come you didn't take action to allow Lansdale Catholic to use one of the athletic facilities that met PIAA requirements free of charge? Let me back up a second. Forget about free of charge, because they paid for, those parents paid for that high school field, just like every other taxpayer in this community. Okay? That was on my list, but since I have 50 seconds, maybe I'm getting okay at this. You know, I was born and raised in the melting pot of Jersey City, and I'm going to talk about community a little bit in my last 40 seconds. I went to high school, I shared a high school with a basketball team called St. Anthony's High School. Maybe you've heard of St. Anthony's. St. Anthony's was one of the best high schools in the entire nation. Their gymnasium was the size of probably this auditorium, maybe times two. Every single high school allowed them to use their facility because that's the community. That's what community is all about. And what you're doing at Lansdale Catholic is wrong, and I see it might be on the agenda for Todd Bauer to speak towards. I'm not sure if that's specifically it, but I'd be interested in hearing that response from either Mr. Bauer or Madam Presidente.
Well... Mr. Altieri, I don't know what Lansdale Catholic event you were speaking of, but I have been a big proponent of LC using the field. I know they used to use the field for football games on Saturdays, and they had to stop using it because we kept getting our games moved, and they had to get moved all the time, too. So they went down to Wissahickin. I've been asking if they wanted to come back and use the field now. So I have no idea what you're talking about when you say that I'm not letting LC use the stadium. But there you go, Mr. Patchell. I did answer your question, so...
I would also like to add, because I'd like to hear from Dr. Bauer as well. I think it's a good opportunity, a learning opportunity for the community about how boards work, especially if you're a politician running to be on the board, Mr. Altieri. There's a chain of command that I don't think any of us... I'm answering your question.
Mr. Altieri.
So you are a constituent who can learn from the process, which is, when you have information, if the administration is not allowing something to happen, I would like to know. Where are the emails? Who's denying that so we can become involved? I think that it demonstrates a recklessness when people wait to get the public comment to strike, to make a political point for political gain, when they could have just talked to Dr. Bauer or any one of us or sent an email that Lansdale Catholic...
Mr. Altieri, please do not yell out from the audience. Do not...
Lansdale Catholic is what we're talking about.
Mr. Altieri, you're out of order. Please do not yell from the audience. Yes, do not yell from the audience. You had your time to speak. You had your time.
So I'm speaking, and this is the type of decorum that you want to have by running for office as a politician to be here. I'm answering, I'm providing information for the community that when there are issues operationally, engage with us. And when we fail, then you should bring this up. But this is not a failure that any of us, I don't think, are aware of. And it's not something that a director from this board, any that I know, get involved in. That's in the weeds. Dr. Bauer?
Yeah, so Mr. Altieri is correct that Lansdale Catholic did come to the school district this year and asked to use the field. And we did not have administrative regulation or a structure for utilizing the field. So for example, if you use our gyms, if you use the other turf field, soccer fields, auditorium, there's a process for that. That process did not yet exist with the new Crawford Stadium. So you'll see that before you this evening, actually. The Facilities and Operations Committee, under Mr. Schneider's direction, created a structure for people to utilize the Crawford Stadium. Now that said, Crawford Stadium has been open in the mornings and evenings for community use, but no one has rented the turf field or utilized the turf field outside of North Penn students. Keep in mind that years ago, prior to the renovation, it was almost exclusively a track for the track and field team and a football field when it was playable. And we were not used to field hockey, lacrosse, ultimate frisbee, marching band, all these organizations utilizing that field. So we let a full season and a half run its course to see what the facility usage would be, what the availability to the community would be, before setting up a structure. So that structure's in place now, and I would expect a lot of folks in our community to utilize the turf field.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
A completely reasonable timeline to make sure that we've got all the pieces in place as we get everything lined up. So thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment?
Lisa from Montgomery Township. I was shocked to view the video of the entire school board members reverently worshiping, raising the pride flag. I have not seen the same reverence for the American flag. In fact, I have observed several members rolling their eyes during the Pledge of Allegiance. Considering all of the men and women who have fought and died for your right to your beliefs, you should be ashamed of your deportment. You totally ignore mention of Memorial Day, Veterans Day, D-Day, et cetera, and they are all single days. Yet you pay homage to a flag that honors a small portion of the population for one entire month. Note that Flag Day honoring the American flag is against just one day. Why is that, I ask you? I have no bias with people's persuasions, but I do have a problem with your current assumptions that American history and most of the population are not important. Do we not honor all of our students and populace without prejudice? Do we not honor all of our students and populace without prejudice? The only flag we must pay homage to is the American flag. Without it, you would not be here currently. Thank you.[607.38][607.38](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Mrs. Nasef. Mr. Patchell, please stop yelling from the audience.
Excuse me, Tina. As a veteran, I've served with this board for almost four years now. I haven't seen one of my fellow board members' boy's eyes disrespect the American flag in any way. I know Mr. Casa has worked to build the Korean War Memorial in Montgomery Township. I and the administration here have given, have given honors to veterans. We've given high school diplomas to veterans who have, didn't have high school diplomas. We have put veterans who were wounded in Vietnam, we've added their name to the Vietnam War Memorial. Those are actions that this board has taken. And as a veteran, I resent you coming here and saying things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
Hey, 66 to 68 here.
Mr. Patchell, stop it, please. Mr. Patchell.
None of these other people did.
Mr. Patchell.
It doesn't mean anything to anybody, but it's a small group.
Mr. Patchell, please do not yell out from the audience. You will be escorted out if you're gonna do it again.
I'm Dr. Joe Nasef, Montgomery Township. I was really saddened and dismayed. The city homage was paid for the gay pride flag, sitting that next to the American flag. I served. I served a lot of people who never came back.
Thank you.
And what do you do? You honor them with one day, Memorial Day. But gay pride? What did they ever do for this country except tear down our society? You people ought to be ashamed of yourselves to allow something like that to happen.
You're all wrong.
I would like to see some action on this. Take that doggone thing down and leave it down.
Thank you, Mr. Nasef. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Good evening, Mrs. Gad.
Good evening. Roseanne Gad Lansdale. Since speaking at these meetings, it has always been about the children. However, this has taken a toll on teachers as well. Teachers are trying to teach, but instead are breaking up fights and constantly dealing with behaviors. Some kids are getting off scot-free with behaviors while others are affected, losing valued teaching time. Teachers should have the right to give consequences when there is bad behavior. Is that happening? Hearing from educators that there is a fine line to discipline all kids. Teachers need classroom management and a learning environment. In order to educate children, there needs to be discipline with dignity. Teachers are not writing up these kids because nothing happens. Is administration afraid of a fallout with a parent? A school board member or members should shadow a teacher at any one of our schools. Anyone? Bueller? Is this a collapsed bridge to something worse? Well, that is the ultimate plan. Just open your eyes and ears, and it's very obvious what is happening. Why are so many teachers leaving? I know many are not liking the agenda. Does anyone care about the teachers' mental health? The education market used to be flooded, but now is drying up. That should be a huge wake-up call. Public education seems to be becoming a thing of the past. Is it because of the school's environment and the direction the district is headed in with this leadership? So why is that? Are you run by the government? Are you forced by other entities? Are you bound by contracts? I am going to say a resounding yes. Private schools don't need to adhere to an agenda. I think school choice should be an option. There is so much hypocrisy within this district. Some teachers are encouraged to hang pride stuff, others are not allowed to hang things that they believe in. You claim bullying is harmful and bad for our kids, but yet it happens here at every board meeting, so please practice what you preach. Why is it that it's a month of celebration for pride but not for our military? These men and women sacrifice their lives and families to keep our freedom, and this leadership doesn't even have the decency to show it. The American flag is an inclusive flag, not the rainbow flag. A few school board members were captured on camera revering the rainbow flag, but haven't seen one revering the American flag. And before you twist my words, I don't care about anyone's gender preference, I care about this being taught and jammed down kids' throats. To accept and adhere to this Marxist agenda. We can be respectful and not agree, but it should be reciprocated. Why is talking about sex with adults at work called sexual harassment, but talking with children about sex at school is called education? This is a conversation for the home, not the school. Just because only a few show up at the meetings doesn't mean others in the community aren't raising concerns about the way this district is heading. Our kids are the future of this country. We need to guide them in the right direction so that they can become independent, successful individuals. Many more people will be standing up, and the truth will be a force to be reckoned with. Our solution is Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gad. Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Bauer, just, if you could maybe brief the community on the work session that we had a couple of weeks ago with Assistant District Attorney? Because I think there's some really good opportunities there for the community to understand exactly those points, how we are aligned with making sure we retain and value teachers. And that's one of the strategies which we feel North Penn's going to be a leader in this county and beyond.
Yeah, certainly. So we were approached by some of the chiefs that serve our six municipalities regarding a, a youth aid panel program via Montgomery County District Attorney Angela Bell, Assistant District Attorney, excuse me, to create a youth aid panel within our schools. So rather than have offenses, if you will, by students that are referred to local law enforcement, they would go before a panel here within North Penn. And consequences that are restorative, like community service, some, some kind of disposition that you would get through the court system, but yet it eludes or evades the school-to-prison pipeline, as you are well aware of, Mr. Casa. So we're hoping to, in collaboration with the police departments and the district attorney, create that program in North Penn. There are two other school districts in Montgomery County that are partnering. We would be the third, under Mr. Roan's leadership, with Mr. Nicholson as well. We're looking forward to getting that up and running this year.
I appreciate that, Dr. Bauer. I think the community members who have that concern, and thank you for expressing that as well, would really benefit from watching that work session, because I don't think there's a person here that night, I see Mr. Altieri nodding, that didn't see this as a great step forward and a way to have more accountability in our schools. So instead of waiting for a juvenile justice system that's overwhelmed taking on cases that it shouldn't. So really, just, would thank you if you take that opportunity to watch that. As far as comments about our educators, it's something else we all agree upon. We want to retain great staff, and, and we have been able to do that, whether it's from bus drivers and not having vacancies, which is pretty remarkable this year compared to other districts. But also, the simple fact that this community, speaking as one board member representing that, our entire community, we value teachers and their professionalism and trust their ability to teach and instruct the future generation of leaders in America. And that's something that we want to make sure our teachers are empowered to do as well. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Casa.
And that is why we opened up the health clinic, which is another benefit that we saw, helping us retain teachers and giving them healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
And the rest of our staff, besides that.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. I believe that work session that you were referring to was on June 6th?
Yes.
If anybody wants to look that up.
Mrs. Stoll, if I may. Mr. Skoraki, we can wait for the finance report, or the treasurer's report, but I would, if you wouldn't mind referencing the comment about a billion dollars.
Sure, I can cover that, the finance report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brachio, you've been waiting.
Sorry, Mrs. Brachio. I didn't see you.
It's okay, it's okay. Hi, Pauline Brachio, Talmanson Township. I was very happy to see the girls who came up for the triathlon, and I was also happier to know that they were not competing against boys. I know boys do it and girls do it, but they're not competing against each other. And that is so important, I've spoken about that before. So any boy or a man who thinks he's a girl or a woman should never, never be in competition in a sports arena with girls and women. They just shouldn't. Even Serena and Venus Williams, they're at the top of their game. A guy who is ranked 236 beat them, beat one of them, I don't remember which one. So it doesn't really matter if they're transgender or not, because there's no such thing as turning a man into a woman. It just is not real. And I want people to understand that. And if you really believe that, then I think you need more education on the biology and the anatomy of the human being. And also, as I said before, it's a totally misogynistic agenda to beat up on girls that way. The other thing is, there was a National Library Conference, and one of the speakers there, this is from the Daily Caller, she was telling, she was explaining to librarians how to label the books so that the truth about the books are hidden from parents and others in the community. This is a quote, "Don't label the books with identity-based subject headings like LGBTQIA+ or gays fiction. Aside from being bad practice, it makes it too easy for parents or community members to find those kinds of books." So they literally want to hide it from the parents and from the rest of the community that they're doing this. I mean, it's, it's really crazy. But anyway, they want to create ways for students to find these books by offering a physical list, so they can look at it while they're in the library. They also, she, this woman also suggested that librarians create a list of LGBTQ books that can be accessed digitally through a username and password for just library patrons or students. The whole thing is to keep, to keep the information from, from the parents. I don't have a lot of time left. I would like to know if I would like to meet with the librarian or whoever the group is who puts the books in the school libraries, or have them come to a meeting so that the public can ask them questions. And the very last thing, I want to give kudos to Kyle Summers. I instructed, I urged Joshua Stein at the county level to talk to you so you could teach him about the Sunshine Law, because he's violating it every single county meeting. So I'm gonna ask you, perhaps you can contact him, if he doesn't contact you, and teach the man about the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brachio. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the rest of our agenda.
Madam President, I have objection for the record.
Of course. Mr. Summers.
Just to be clear, is this a... The Sunshine Act, Objection 703. I'm, I'm gonna, give me a second here. I'm gonna read from Senate Bill Number 554 of the 2021 Session. And we're gonna go down here to subsection C., Point 1, Notification of Agency Business to Be Considered. And we're gonna go down to Number 3. "The agency shall make available to individuals in attendance at the meeting copies of the agenda, which include a listing of each matter of agency business that will be or may be the subject of deliberation or official action at the meeting." My name is Giuseppe Anthony Crani Matiselli, and I'm living in the most prime real estate in the district. I'm still living inside my body, thank God. And that is my objection. We have, God bless the homeless vets here, who may or may not have access to the internet. You need to list the agenda. I understand that's a problem with paper, but you need to be putting synopses for each agenda item and the packet to the attachments to each agenda item. So when you're sending kids to these warehouses, you need to attach the contract agreement and have that available in person. That's my objection, Mr. Summers. Are we gonna vote upon that? Thank you for your objection. That objection will be noted. As I've indicated previously to the board, the Sunshine Act requires that the agenda be available to members of the public, but there is silent as to all attachments to a particular agenda. I'm unaware of any guidance that suggests that all attachments need to be printed and available in the meeting space. The board does far and away exceed transparency standards in terms of attaching those documents to our internet, our website, and the availability of the agenda there. There's also the agenda itself, but the attachments is correct, have not been printed and are not available at the meeting. And my opinion is that is not a violation of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Mr....
What do you mean?
Mr. Monticelli.
It will be recorded in the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Monticelli. Okay. If there's no further comments, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. And I just also want to note for the record that Dr. G is with us on, online. Yep, so, okay. So, next up was the approval of the minutes from the May 18, 2023 action meeting, and the approval of the minutes from the June 6, 2023 board work session. Can I have a motion, please?
Show me a second.
Motion by Mr. Rush and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up are the committee reports. First is personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met on June 6, 2023 to discuss matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff and staffing considerations. End of report. Finance, that is usually Mr. Fusco. Dr. Lewis Campbell, do you wanna? Thank you.
At the May 23 Special Finance Committee meeting, the following items were discussed. Detailed enterprise fund budget presentations were made for the following departments. Extended school care, community education, school nutrition services. The executive summary presentation and line item budget detail for each department are posted in board docs. The 2023-24 budget for each of these enterprise funds appears on tonight's agenda. At the June 6, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, the financial reports and budget transfers were reviewed in addition to the following items. Mr. Skoraki provided a presentation on the latest draft of the 2023-24 budget. The final budget appears on tonight's agenda. Number 2, Mr. Skoraki reviewed the list of potential district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals for the 2023 year. The identified properties meet the criteria of the board policy since they are at least $600,000 under assessed. Number 3, Mr. Skoraki reviewed the homestead/farmstead exclusion for 2023-24. The exclusion on the eligible tax bills will be $264.53. This item appears on tonight's agenda. Number 4, Mr. Skoraki led a discussion regarding the timing of the Electoral Dec referendum for Option 1 of the high school renovation slash new construction project. The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 11th, at 6:00 PM at the ESC. Please note that the July Finance Committee meeting is typically canceled. End of report.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Roan discussed the importance of communications and the need to evaluate and upgrade as the needs of operations are ever-changing and evolving. Mr. Gilmer then presented to the committee on the district's current two-way radio system. Mr. Gilmer and Mr. Roan made a recommendation to add a new repeater to the system and then upgrade the others currently in use as a way to increase redundancy. The committee agreed with the recommendation and thanked Mr. Roan and Mr. Gilmer for the information and recommendations. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting is scheduled for this coming Monday, June 26, 2023, at 5:45 PM, and will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the ECI report. Dr. G, did you want to read that, or did you want somebody else to read it for you?
Could I ask one of my colleagues to read it, please? Thank you.
Sure, no problem. All right, Mr. McBain?
The education curriculum and instruction...
The Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on Thursday, June 20. Mr. Pete Nicholson and Dr. Pam Hart presented review and rationale of authentic assessment as well as the timeline to support Year Two of its implementation. There was also a presentation by Dr. Pam Hart and three learning coaches to highlight the wonderful work they've been engaged in this year to support teaching and learning. In addition, the committee reviewed a student travel action item that's on our list tonight. Next month, the committee will meet on Thursday, August 22 at 5:30 PM in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on then to Policy. Mr. Rush, please.
The Policy. The Policy Committee met on May 22. On the agenda were three policies. Policy 808, Food Services; Policy 800.1, Electronic Signatures and Records; and Policy 915, School-Related Groups. All three policies are included on tonight's Action Agenda for first reading. The next meeting of the Policy Committee is scheduled for June 26, 2023, at 5:00 PM in a virtual format. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on then to Facilities and Operations. Mrs. Wesley, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on Monday, May 22 in a virtual format. The committee reviewed the following items to be moved to this evening's Action Meeting for the Board's consideration. Two change orders for the elementary school chiller and exhaust fan project; a facilities use waiver request to hold a memorial service for a longtime employee, Mr. James Feinmeyer; a facilities use request to host the Crossman Drum and Bugle Corps at the high school for three days; and a new facility use fees for the Crawford Stadium Track and Field. The committee was presented and discussed informational items that included compliance series, which we're starting now. The first one is, was a presentation regarding the North Penn School District's required compliance with the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act and the many specifics of the Act that were presented by Mr. Dan Linsky, who was the Coordinator of Environmental and Custodial Services. The high school project update with detailed documentation outlining the preliminary estimates and an update on our 10-year capital project plan. The next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting will be held on Monday, June 26 at 7:00 PM and will be in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the North Monco Technical Career Center, please.
Thank you, Madam President. On Wednesday, May 31, families from across the region gathered at our North Penn High School auditorium to celebrate the North Monco Technical Career Center's 55th graduating class at their annual senior recognition night. Special thanks to Dr. Bauer, our high school facilities team, Mr. Gilmer, the NPTV crew, for helping families celebrate 261 graduating seniors, including over 100 of North Penn's own. Congratulations and best wishes to the class of 23. The Joint Operating Committee met this past Monday evening and approved a number of personnel and curriculum items to prepare for the upcoming academic year. This included the purchase of new social media marketing materials to support one of several new programs being offered, as well as the new hiring of Mr. Michael Moore, a graduate of North Monco and North Penn School District as the new culinary arts teacher. Welcome back and best of luck this year, Mr. Moore. In just this past academic year, North Monco students have earned 1,477 industry certifications in preparation for their careers. As that math suggests, many were able to earn more than one, and it's also worth noting that over 500 of those certifications were earned by ninth and 10th grade students. We once again express our sincere appreciation to Administrative Director Gina Partovich, Assistant Director Dr. Beth Ann Haas, Principal Steven Manastra, and the entire education team at North Monco Technical Center for all their leadership and tremendous work this year. The next meeting of the JOC will be held Monday, August 21 at 7:00 PM in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Next up is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great, thank you. The MCIU Board met on May 24, and we started our meeting with a celebration of this year's retirees. We were able to celebrate five MCIU staff members who are retiring. The Office of Professional Learning shared that they were the recipients of a grant in the amount of just under $30,000 that will be used to create a mobile environmental lab that can be transported to different school districts to share environmental science lessons with students across the county. The MCIU leadership team is working with other IUs to develop innovative solutions to the educator, educator shortage in Pennsylvania. In terms of program highlight, we heard from the MCIU's Food Service Program coordinators where we learned about the MCIU's Child and Adult Food Care Program, the Summer Food Service Program, and the School Nutrition Program. The Board approved the acceptance of bids for general construction, fire protection, plumbing, mechanical, and general electric construction for the renovations at the site on Morris Road. The Board approved many human resource updates, including the hiring of 11 employees, accepted four resignations, and one retirement. The Anderson School had its graduation on Tuesday, June 13. The next MCIU, or I guess the MCIU Policy, Head Start Policy Council meeting was on June 14, and the next meeting of the MCIU Board will be on June 28. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And now we'll just stay with Mrs. Ramich and have the North Penn Ed Foundation report, please.
Great, thank you. The Education Foundation met in May at Pendale Middle School, where we toured the Independent Learning Center, which was fully, was partially funded with foundation funds. Our Treasurer, Jack Hoy, reported that the annual independent accountants audit review was recently completed. Compiled by Herbin and Associates, the review found our financials to be in order with no findings otherwise. I'm also happy to report that we ended the 2022 fiscal year with more than $400,000 in cash and investment assets. In May, the Foundation approved more than $42,000 in grants for the 2023-2024 school year. These 17 innovative classroom projects support every grade level and just about every curriculum, from science to art to social emotional health. Thank you for the trustees and the North Penn staff members who reviewed and selected these worthwhile programs. The Foundation's focus over the summer will be planning its annual golf classic. This year's theme will be Fall Toberfest, and the outing will be held Tuesday, October 10 at Tallamore Country Club. To learn more about all things Foundation-related, please visit npennfoundation.org or contact Christine Labrovsky at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Legislative Report. Mr. McBane, please.
Thank you again. The Pennsylvania General Assembly continues to debate the budget in Harrisburg through a process that began with the Governor's Proposal last March, but may not be complete until, or I'm sorry, let me rephrase, but may not complete their work by the deadline next Friday, June 30. The House passed a proposed $900 million increase in education funding, which includes $250 million for Level Up, an additional appropriation for districts which were the most severely underfunded by the state's past basic education funding formula. In fact, there's a measure currently in the House, co-sponsored by local representatives Serrado, Hambridge, and Malagari, which would increase that Level Up support to 400 million. These proposals are facing strong opposition in the Senate from their leadership. As we advocate for more equitable funding for public education here in North Penn and across the state, a number of proposals to provide tax relief to neighbors and replenish the pipeline of quality educators entering the field remain under review in the Senate. HB 11, not, can't say it that way, HB 1100 would expand the property tax with, the property tax rent rebate program by increasing the income limits of qualified Pennsylvanians to $45,000 for homeowners and renters, as well as raise the maximum possible rebate. HB 100 will allow school districts to provide opportunities for high school juniors and seniors to gain both educational experience and academic credits for tutoring younger students at the elementary level. And HB 688 seeks to replenish the pipeline of well-prepared educators by offering a new PAT scholarship program to eligible students. Finally, a cosponsorship memo, which addresses the inequalities inherent in cyber charter school funding and administration, was introduced in the House last week from the Chair of the House Subcommittee on Basic Education, Representative Cerisi. In it, he proposes greater fiscal responsibility by establishing a statewide cyber charter annual tuition rate set by the state, applying the same special education funding formula currently used to fund public school districts to cyber charter special education programs, and placing reasonable restrictions on advertising expenditures and events, event sponsorships. The memo also promotes the same basic ethics standards for cyber charter trustees and administrators as are currently in place for public school boards, including mandatory state financial and ethical reporting standards and requiring their meetings follow the Sunshine Act. As always, neighbors are invited to contact their state representatives and senators to advocate for North Penn students, taxpayers, staff, and families. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Summers and the solicitors' report, please.
Thank you. My report this evening is just to announce that the Board did meet in an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a matter of collective bargaining between the district and the North Penn Education Association. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, now we'll move on to the main event. Dr. Bauer, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you. First, I'd like to recommend the items listed under the Consent Agenda, namely, adoption of policies, adoption of policies first read, notice of intent to repeal policies, contracts, gifts to the district, student travel, approval to advertise for bid, the bid award for the 23-24 athletic medical supplies, rejection of the 23-24 fall athletics supplies bid, award the 23-24 musical instruments bid, the 23-24 Chromebooks, desktops, and laptops bid award, technology RFP for web filter and classroom monitor solution, technology RFP for work order and inventory solution, technology RFP for endpoint detection resolution, student agreements, alternative placements, acceptance of the Lukens Foundation grant in the amount of $1,399.95, a CPAS trustee appointment, the 24 board meeting schedule, and lastly, business office operational items for the summer of '23.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Are there any comments or questions? I would just, would like to say thank you for the gifts that have been donated to the school district. And Mr. Pacheco, since you are here this evening, I'll thank you and Judy for your contribution, or donation, rather, of the flag of the state of Pennsylvania. So thank you very much. All right, if there's no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, on to the non-consent agenda items. First, I recommend the approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, I do have a comment.
Okay.
So, my comment is specific to the position for the North Bridge and Education Service Center, the Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Services. I'm not in favor of the way the process went about. The, the posting was just done internally, and I feel strongly that this position is a very large leadership role and that as a board, we should, and administration, we should cast the net far and wide and have a more robust interview process. While I wish the successful candidate much success, as well as anyone else in this, unfortunately, I just can't oppose this one particular, this one particular item. I have to do the whole dad gum.
Report, right.
Yes, so I just want to go on the record about why I am opposing this particular item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Are there any other comments or questions?
I have an objection, Sunshine Act objection.
Hmm.
Good. It's beautiful.
Mr. Summers, is this?
I have a Sunshine Act objection, 703.
Is it the same objection as your prior objection?
No.
Okay.
It's a different objection. The county commissioners are able to, you know, say no to just one item. So she should be able to say no to just one.
And that objection is not a Sunshine Act objection. It's, I understand your, your comment, but it is not a Sunshine Act objection.
Thank you. All right, there's no further comments or questions. There is a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So, motion carries.
Okay, and with that vote, I am very pleased to share that we have three of the recommended and now approved candidates in the room with us this evening. We have Dr. Jacqueline Barnhart here. She is the Coordinator of Extended School Care. Dr. Barnhart? We have Dr. Neil Brocksterman, Assistant Director of Special Education. And we also have Mr. Dan Grunmeier, Assistant Principal at Penbrook Middle School. I am very pleased to share with the Board that I have the utmost confidence in all three individuals and very deserving of these positions, and we're excited for you to get started. Also, a special acknowledgement of Mrs. Katie Grunmeier in the audience, Dan's wife. She is a Health and PE teacher at North Penn High School. So Katie, thank you for lending us Dan. Okay.
Great.
Congratulations to all three of them and everyone else listed. Next, I would like to recommend the approval of the adoption of textbooks and related resources in the subject area of English Language Arts for grades K to six, as listed.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McBane and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Are there any comments or questions?
My only comments would be that there was several presentations about these curricular materials through the ECI Committee, and those materials were on display in the lobby out here at the ESC for over 30 days, as per the school board policy.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend the approval of the RFP award for OTPT and speech services for PTS, which is Pneumatic Therapeutic Services, as listed for three years, starting July 2023, for the fiscal years 23-24 through 25-26, ending June 30, 2026, for these regular services throughout the fiscal year, and with Ostels and Abington Speech to be used for backup purposes, including our ESY services.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I recommend the approval of a survey contract with Cowan Associates Incorporated in the amount of $14,300 to perform a boundary and topographic survey and prepare an existing features plan on the North Penn High School and 1210 Snyder Road properties.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rush and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, just one question. Is this in relationship to the, the future high school project?
It is, yes.
Is there, does this, does this have an end date to it in terms of it expires after a certain amount of time?
I'm not aware of an end date, Ms. Wesley.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking is I've run into this before in my past where we did this, and then when we went to apply for different permits because it was delayed so long, we actually had to go back and do it again because there's an expiration. I don't know if that's applicable here, but I just know I made a big oops in my previous life with something like this. So I'd be interested to know.
Yeah, we'll check. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just of note here, this is the same group that did the surveying when we did the Crawford Stadium project, so they are familiar with our property.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend the approval of Change Order C02 to GEM Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amount of $8,698.71 for the materials and labor to connect temporary chillers at Bridle Path and Walton Farm Elementary Schools. I also recommend the approval of Change Order COO2 to Electrotech Incorporated in the amount of $2,746.80 for the materials and labor to connect temporary chillers at Bridle Path. It's the exact same thing. So I guess we use, Steve, we use two contractors to do this work?
You have the mechanical contractor and you have the electrical contractor.
All right, so we, the exact same change order for the exact same items. One was electronic, one was mechanical.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
Yes.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rush, seconded by Mr. McBane. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Before I read this recommendation, I want to ask Mr. Summers, is it okay if our Board President makes this motion? Because I know she did have Mr. Finnamire as a teacher.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, all right. So I recommend the approval of the waiver for facility use fees, including rental and hourly fees for the memorial service for longtime North Penn employee, Mr. James Finnamire.
Thank you. I happily make that motion. One of the best teachers North Penn has ever had, and I'm glad he's being honored that way. So I make a mo- way, so I make a motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion by me, seconded by Mr. McVane. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, I apologize for not pronouncing his last name correctly. I feel bad.
That's okay. I was gonna, I thought about correcting you.[860.12][860.12](laughter) All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the facility use by Crosman Drum and Bugle Corp., Crosman Productions Incorporated, for their overnight use of North Penn High School from 4:00 a.m. on Friday, August 4th, to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, August 6th, for the fee of $3,500.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions?
I have another question. I'm sorry, Madam President.
That's okay.
I just wanted to follow up because we discussed this before regarding any type of security or safety plan, and I would just like to hear about that. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Wesley, in a Facilities and Operations Committee meeting, requested that we have emergency procedures actually presented to the attendees because they'll be staying over if there were an emergency in the middle of the night, et cetera. So I spoke with Mr. Nicholson and Mr. Roan about that, and we will be present to speak with the groups when they arrive.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? If you have a motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the filing of district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals by the August 1st '23 deadline, as per the attached list of parcels and Board Policy 3631.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I apologize, I went from F to H. I missed G, which was, I recommend the approval of facility, wait, excuse me. I recommend the approval of the new facility use fees for Crawford Stadium, as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend the approval of an increase of 2.55% to the salary hourly rate schedule of non-union and confidential support staff, except for our School Nutrition Services Enterprise Fund staff, for the '23-'24 fiscal year, effective July 1st, '23.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Rush. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the final budget resolution in the amount of $312,218,693 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, per the attached resolution and PDE 2028 budget document.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Mr. McVane. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would just note there, anyone with questions, I would recommend you watch the hours of Mr. Skrocky speaking about that budget. Item L here, we recommend the approval of the '23 Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion, as per the attached resolution.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the '23-'24 School Nutrition Services Enterprise Fund budget in the amount of $7,000, $7,301,478. Breakfast meals will be free for all students for the year, and lunch meals will be free for all qualifying, free, and reduced students for the school year.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Madam President.
Go ahead.
We should take any opportunity to champion our School Nutrition Services and just promote it, I believe, this week. I don't have the details in front of me, but the Summer School Meals Program for students, which is really essential in helping our families and students in need, you know, deal with the risks that they have to face until they get back to the school year. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the '23-'24 Extended Care Program Enterprise Fund budget in the amount of $2,205,917, as per the attached.
All in favor say, I'm sorry. Can I have, I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the '23-'24 Community Education Enterprise Fund budget in the amount of $198,812, as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, three assessment appeals. Recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Brotherhood LP concerning the property located at 1200 Welsh Road, Montgomery Township, which is parcel 460004151339, be approved as presented, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for that parcel shall be increased from $555,790 to $831,720.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Dean Dairy Fluid LLC concerning the property located at 880 Allentown Road in Upper Gwinnett Township, which is partial, parcel, excuse me, 560000127006, be approved as presented, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be increased from $3,966,440 to $5,488,190.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and W2005 Fargo Hotels Pool A Realty LP concerning the property located at 544 DeKalb Pike, Montgomery Township, which is parcel 460000316205, be approved as presented, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $6,331,500 to $5,159,000.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. I think that's the longest Superintendent's Report we've had in a while. All right, moving on then to the Finance Report. Mr. Skrocky, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple reminders for our community, with the passage of the budget tonight, unfortunately comes the real estate tax bills. So they are being prepared right now, and they should be in everyone's mailboxes early July. If you are a property owner in North Penn School District and you don't receive your tax bill by mid-July, please reach out to your locally-elected tax collector for your municipality. Unfortunately, failure to receive your tax bill does not relieve you from payment of that tax bill. So, you know, we are aware of some issues with mail delivery lately, so please reach out to your tax collector in mid-July if you don't have that tax bill. Also, with the passage of tonight's budget, it reaffirms the rebate program for the '23-'24 fiscal year. A reminder, if anyone received our tax rebate program in the past, you're probably eligible in the new year. The rebate percentage will be increasing from 75% up to 90% in the new fiscal year. And if you know of anyone that receives a rebate through the Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rent Rebate Program, please let them know about the North Penn program, because we still only have about 35% of those individuals that receive a state rebate applied to the North Penn program. So we clearly still have a lot of work to do in terms of spreading the word about our program. And Dr. Bauer, you asked me to address the, I think we had two community members tonight throw out a number of $1 billion for the high school project. You know, quite frankly, I suppose I need to meet with those individuals because I have no idea where they're getting that number from. Perhaps they have architects and engineers working for them and doing their own individual estimates. I'm not sure. But clearly, we, as stated in several community meetings, there were two options. Option one being approximately $400 million. And that's $400 million in principal. We've made that pretty clear as well, and Dr. Bauer, I'll steal your line, when you say you're buying a house for $300,000, you don't say, "I'm paying $450,000 for the house" because it includes interest. You say you're buying $300,000 for the house because that's the principal amount of the transaction. So I, again, I really have no idea where that billion dollars come from, and really, it's irresponsible to throw out inaccurate numbers like that unless there's actual documentation to support that number. We've made it clear that the estimates at this point are square foot estimates. They're not design estimates. The design process has commenced, and we will have engineered design estimates sometime probably around October or November. We're not anticipating those design estimates to exceed $400 million.
If I can interrupt you real quick, Mr. Skrocky. The question was asked about why wait till, say, January or March for a referendum vote, and you just hit the nail on the head with why. Because I think it was Mr. Patchell said, "We want to know what we're voting on." So we're in the process of design. We actually had a meeting today with 30 people, teachers of all departments and administration from across the district to try to say, "How many English classrooms? How many this spaces? How many locker rooms? How many?" All those things. And the architects are actually designing. So the plan is to have a true design, a 3D model, a fly-through to see what is being voted upon. So that's between last month's vote and approval of a design contract to the actual vote on, okay, this one, option one or option two, in between now and then, that's the time. So I appreciate you saying that. But that, the design process has commenced officially today.
They don't know anything about Mr. Patchell. They don't know.
Mr. Patchell, please.
They don't want to know.
Mr. Skrocky has the floor.
Okay, in terms of the, the numbers for the Treasurer's Report, this is for the month of May, 2023. Cash receipts for May totaled $8.6 million. Cash disbursements for the month totaled $20.7 million. Our total available funds at the end of the month were $107.7 million. And that's about a $13.6 million increase compared to the same time last year. So we're asking for approval of the Treasurer's Report for May 2023, please.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Mr. McVane.